Board of Education reports, as you all know by now, we are conducting all of our meetings via Zoom. That will continue, it's looking like through February, but may change. So right now, the forecast is that we will be via Zoom unless otherwise noted. One meeting that I do want to mention, and Val, I know you have a report tonight out on legislative, but we had an extremely productive meeting last week. I wanted Val to share some of the information that we talked about because we're trying to prepare talking points and feedback for our regents. So Val, if you'd like to report out on that.
Sure. So we spoke about two different categories, I guess you can say. One is what we want to respond to our regents. If you recall, they asked us in November if there are ways that they can help us either in the next six months or so, or maybe even permanently for relief. And then the other category, I'll just call what our legislative priorities are and continued advocacy moving forward for the rest of this year. So for the regents, they also came out with their own list of items that they're advocating for. And so we had three of those items that we highlighted in the Monroe County School Board Group as well. One was the relief from duplicating the financial transparency from the ESA. And I think we talked about that here in December. Another is flexibility on transportation. We're talking about, we were talking about the reimbursement for transportation-related costs during COVID, not associated with actually driving students. The CDL licensing and testing to alleviate the workforce shortages and preschool student transportation. And then also, another one on the regents list was the extension of the payback period for reserve fund usage and exemption from the 4% fund balance limit. In addition to that, we also wanted to ask the regents for, to allow more local input and local control on assessments. The CTE certification and pathways to graduation, which we know they are already working on. And then the use of our COVID aid as well. We also asked for more lead time and structure of administration of assessment in the spring and moving forward. In the fall, the Department of Education stated that they will be going forward with assessments, but that certainly could change sometime soon. But as of right now, supposedly they're still on. We're asking for information as early as possible. We are reporting that students and teachers are all feeling a lot of stress right now, and we don't want to add to that as well. And we also feel like this is a really good time and opportunity for us to make positive change moving forward. So we're hoping that this can be something permanent moving forward. And again, we asked for relief from mandates, greater awareness of unintended consequences and any cost from mandates, and again, relief because of pandemic costs. And we also talked about technology equity being a utility, similar to gas and electric or something like that. We want them to think that, think in terms of the utility. And again, I think Cuomo mentioned that today in his State of the State address as well. So we're kind of on the same page there. For our legislative priorities, one of the things we'd like to do is write a letter to the new Department of Education Secretary when that person gets confirmed. And I think I sent you a background information on the nominee, Miguel Cardona. So we'd like to just highlight some of the things we do regarding New York State education, but with Monroe County in particular as well. We'd also probably send that to Schumer and Gillibrand, Morelli and Jacobs. We also talked about the fact that we have an opportunity with our new legislators, just to really educate them. And so we were hoping that that, we can make those connections with those folks as well. Again, funding remains our number one priority for legislation. For advocacy, we're very concerned that the governor's going to ignore or disable the foundation aid. So we're sort of really paying attention to that. And we know there's an, Assemblywoman has a bill up in there. I think it was in Sherry's update, if you want to look through that as well, that I think I forwarded to. We also wanted more information about the definition on the school budget and/or the budget schedule and the school votes. And hopefully we can get that information as soon as possible. That's another thing that Cuomo talked about, elections in his State of the State today. We had a lot of questions about the vaccine logistics. And to be honest with you, it was a very long conversation, but some of those questions have already been answered. And I feel like by the time we have to meet with our legislators, even more of those questions will be answered. But you know, maybe more questions will come up because of that. So I left my play that by ear. And again, local control and mandate relief. And I think I sent you, yeah, Becky sent the mandate relief that was just updated by the COAC. And also the nine-page, the per people costs and what those are associated with. And those are all mandates that we have. Oh, and the other thing that's really important is that our next meeting has actually been changed to Thursday, February 4th at noon. It's also via Zoom. Becky's been able to get several of the new legislators to come for that meeting. I don't want to say who, because I think she's still trying to confirm them, but I know she has a handful. And we're hoping for March to have some of our returning legislators come in to speak with them in March. That will probably also not be on the Wednesday either, because they're all in session, I think, in March, Monday through Thursday, and February, Monday through Wednesday, or something like that. Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I think the only thing that I would add to that is really stressing upon individual boards to meet with legislators at this time. Because right now is the time you want to set into motion who you are, what the different needs are. Because every district is going to have different needs. And I think that it's helpful for the legislators to hear district by district what the differences are. So the sooner that we can get a few of us to meet with the legislators as well, I think the better off we'll be. I also just wanted to highlight that this was a meeting via Zoom with a lot of different districts with a lot of different needs. And I have to just say, Val, a quick shout out for facilitating a really challenging meeting, and you did a great job. But one thing that was highlighted in that meeting too, was the importance right now in particular about having someone like Val Baum in your individual boards to be a legislative liaison because of the kind of era that we're in right now. So I have to thank you for facilitating the meeting and also for what you do on an ongoing basis and representing us. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Deb, you did get the change in the date for the next legislative meeting, correct? If you could give me a thumbs up? Awesome. Okay, thank you. And we do have a COAC meeting scheduled, which is amazing, on the 28th. I just wanted to highlight that. We will be working on a few additional papers, so. Other dates to remember, we have Martin Luther King Day coming up on the 18th. We have a board tour at Jefferson Road. And again, that's no visit, but we will be touring the building at 7:15 a.m. on the 21st. If I could just have a show of hands of those who think that they will be there at this point? Okay. Yours was up right. Okay, thanks Ted. And our next meeting is the 25th of January. Financial report, Darren.
The Treasury report for November has some good, or potentially good indicators as far as the economy is concerned. Our property taxes, it was the last month of collections, and it was actually about 1% higher than the same time last year, which is pretty unusual that we're over 98%. The balance of those uncollected taxes will receive later in the spring directly from the county. We also received sales tax revenue for the quarter, and that was up about 1.5% over the same time period of last year. You'll notice on the revenue report that we received foundation aid. That was the withholding for the teachers' retirement system. So it actually wasn't a check, they just basically keep the money. But because the retirement system rates went down, it was a little less than the year before. The school lunch fund, we're averaging about 600 meals per day, less than we were at this time last year. Makes perfect sense in the sense that we have the hybrid model and closed on Wednesdays. But it's causing a little fiscal stress for the program. And you can see that at the bottom of the page when you look at, excuse me, the fund balance report and $272,000 so far of operational deficit for the year. So that's the highlights of the Treasury's report.
May I have a motion to approve the Treasury's report? Thanks Pete, thank you Renee. Any questions?
Curious, Darren, are you surprised at the sales tax number? And what's the driving factor there?
I am surprised, especially if you, you know, if you've been to business official meetings back, say, in April timeframe and throughout the summer. But throughout, I'd say, from June on, it's been trending very well. And it's been mostly things like cars and durable goods, et cetera. So that's why I'm a bit confused why the CPI is down so low, because it's on the same indicators. Next item on the agenda is a capital reserve fund for the purchase of buses. We are doing it about a month earlier this year. The manufacturers and the dealers are requesting schools do the letter of intent earlier, because last year with the pandemic, a lot of schools had to back out. And it caused problems as far as deliveries and manufacturing, et cetera. We are not bound to this, it's just a letter of intent that should the voters approve, that we will purchase these buses. And it's just asking the voters to withdraw $1.3 million out of the bus purchase reserve to replace 12 buses.
If we could just step back and actually vote on the Treasury's report? All in favor for the Treasury's report? Opposed? Motion carried. And if I may have a motion to approve the proposition for buses. Thank you Pete and Irene. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks Darren. Human resource report, Mike.
So first for your consideration is the professional staff report. It just has some middle-year hirings that we're filling in.
May I have a motion to approve? Thanks Val. Thanks Ted, Val and Ted. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Second for your consideration is the support staff report. What you'll just note is we have a few retirements. And for our support staff, this is not an unusual time of year to get those.
May I have a motion, please? Robin and Renee, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Also, just a note, we have the first reading for our administrator tenure recommendations. And barring any objections, the plan would be to bring them back to the board at the last January meeting for approval. Thank you.
Thanks Mike. Curriculum report, Melanie.
I wanted to share with you the results of a really quick dipstick that we did over the last six weeks or so, attempting to put our arms around the question of the extent to which our students may have experienced any kind of measurable academic gap based on last spring's closure and this fall's temporary learning models. It's really important to me that as we look at this information, we are all understanding that under no circumstances was this intended to be a scientific study of any sort. And that grades by their very nature are subjective. So this is not objective data, this is not standardized test scores that we're looking at. These are grades that are derived from what teachers put in their grade books, depending on how they're calculating grades. So all of this, I say because there's a big grain of salt that sits on my shoulder in sharing data from grades. But it's really all that we had at this point to be able to do a year-over-year comparison. So I thought it was an important thing to take a look at. So we looked first at some elementary data. We do elementary report cards three times a year, just to remind you. And last year was our first year with our pretty significantly revised elementary report card. So we only had last year and this year to compare, we couldn't go back any further than that. We identified just three standards on our elementary standards-based report card to pull the data from. Just again, as a really quick dipstick, so you see what those three standards are there. Independently read, independently write, and perseveres through challenges, which is one of our learning mindsets on the report card. Our elementary report card standards are graded on a 4-3-2-1 scale or are not yet assessed. And typically, or the one year that we had the report card before this year, there was consistency across the district as to which standards would be identified as not yet assessed on the November report card. Given the nature of the temporary learning models this year and the fact that in some buildings, for example, first grade teachers have all their kids together, and in other buildings, they have them split into pods. We gave teachers the ability this year, working with their building principal, to make some individualized decisions about putting an NYA on a standard, as long as there was consistency at the building. And they were, again, they were, you know, on board with their principal for doing that. So again, you see some variations. But this is just a way of taking a really quick look at where we are. And again, I wish, you know, my data heart wishes that we had some more objective data to assess where our kids are with their reading at this point. But for the most part, as you look at it, and again, that first grade data, we have to remember that we have a fairly significant chunk of not yet assessed. But if you look at the rest of the grades, you see that our kiddos this year are performing pretty close to where they were last year. Again, with a scale of meets, grade level expectations, mostly meets, inconsistently meets. So there's some subjectivity built into these grades. Teachers worked really hard, as we rolled this report card out, to come up with common criteria to decide if a child meets grade level standards or not. But again, subjectivity. The writing standard starts at second grade, so you only see four grades worth of data here. But this data looks, I think, particularly good, you know, in second and third grade, a little bit more of a dip in fourth and fifth grade. I think it's worth noting, particularly when you look at that second and third grade data, that one of the things we built into our instructional roadmap this year as an accommodation for the closure last year, were some consistent expectations around stamina and productivity in writing. So kids in every classroom, each and every classroom across the district, there are expectations about the amount and the amount of time kids are writing every single day in class, which is a little different than our previous approaches. And I think particularly at these primary grades, that seems to really be paying off. And then we were interested in looking at that perseverance piece, because we have a sense, of course, that the pandemic has taken a toll on our kids, but it has also helped them to develop some perseverance and determination and flexibility. So that was an interesting one for us to pull some information on as well. And then at the secondary level, again, we just did a sampling of courses. We did not look at grades for every course. I selected a course or two from each of the five core standards areas. Excuse me. You'll see what feels like a lot more data relative to math. And to some extent, well, to a large extent, that's because we have multiple levels of math in each grade level that we're looking at. So here, what we looked at is the average first quarter grade for each of the courses. And we have five years' worth of data that's presented. We will be pulling this data again at the end of the first semester. And we have a lot of data behind these bar charts that we can sort of use to hone in particular kids or supports that might be needed. So I've presented the data in a way that allows you to look at courses in a sort of a together comparison way. So Math 6 and Math 6 Honors. And you can see, again, the average first quarter grades. Important to note that the scale on all of these charts is from 80 to 100. If it was to be extrapolated to a 0 to 100 scale, those differences obviously would look significantly smaller. So just pay attention to the numbers as you take a look at that. And then Math 8 versus how our eighth graders taking algebra did on their report card first quarter. So again, these are all eighth graders, Math 8 or algebra. And then on the next slide, you see the same algebra grade 8 data, but now we have our eighth grade algebra students compared to our ninth grade algebra students to see where the gaps may be, may or may not be occurring this year compared to previous years. Algebra 2 Common Core and Algebra 2 Common Core Honors. Sort of an interesting piece here. Our Algebra 2 Common Core first quarter grades this year are actually slightly above that of the previous three years. Again, really small increments of change. So when I look at these, this data set, what my eye really goes to is looking for patterns. So not so much any particular individual numbers or data sets, but what are the patterns that we're able to uncover as we look at this? Then we have English 6 and English 8. English 10 and English 10 Honors. Living Environment and Living Environment Honors. Global 9, which is a completely heterogeneous class. We don't have a Global 9 Honors, we just have Global 9. And then from World Languages, I pulled Spanish 2. That is typically taken also by ninth graders. It is also a heterogeneous class, there's not a leveling there. And it's our largest enrolled world language class at the high school level. So that's why I pulled that particular class. So this slide actually ends up with mostly ninth graders in both charts. So for me, again, when I took a look at this, I looked at for patterns. And generally speaking, I think we see some slight downtick in quarterly averages this year compared to previous years. That doesn't hold up in every course, and some courses were right on or actually a little bit above. But overall, I'm not seeing a significant dip in our quarterly averages for our kids in any of these secondary courses. Now again, these are grades. What we don't know, because we haven't gone in and talked with teachers specifically about this, we don't know if there were things that impacted the way they graded kids this year differently than previous years. What I can tell you is that in most cases for these courses presented, but not all, we have had very stable staffing in these courses. So the same teachers year-over-year against this data, teaching the courses. There's not been a big flip in terms of who's teaching these courses this year that could account for significant differences in the way the grades are recorded. But, so I think it's a good news story, but I think it's one, just one way of looking at student performance. If we start to dig in and look at kids on the edges, we know that we have kids, some kids who are really excelling this year, who are really thriving. Kids in the fully remote model who are thriving in a way they might never have succeeded in a fully in-person traditional model. And then we have kids who are really, really struggling. We do have kids who are finding it hard to get their work completed, and teachers are working really hard to keep up with those kids and build in supports. And it's tough for teachers to find opportunities to provide kids with the same kind of one-on-one student assistance support that they have in a normal year because of all the constraints around safety protocols and schedules and whatnot. So I'm happy to answer any questions for you. I just thought it was kind of good for you to see, we did a little dipstick, it's not scientific. I think it asks, it raises more questions than gives us answers, but I think that's what a good data exercise typically does, so.
So I do have a question, thank you. This is really interesting. How do you measure perseveres through challenges? What is exactly you're looking at?
So the teachers, again, when we put the report card together, they worked as grade level teams to identify particular behaviors that they would be looking for. And we really talked about, in order to even have that on the report card and be able to measure it in any way, it requires teachers to give kids tasks that feel somewhat challenging and to step back and allow the kids to attempt those tasks and engage in some perseverance. So we're really looking at kids' willingness to attempt something multiple times, to be comfortable with the productive struggle that goes into learning. It can be looked at both through the academic lens and the social lens though as well. Yep.
Trying to learn how to, or think of how to phrase this. If you look at, I think, first and second graders primarily, how does this data compare to those students who did not have full-day kindergarten or the opportunity? Do we go back that far or?
So with this particular way of pulling the data, it would be challenging to do that because it's, the report card is completely different than previous year's report card. So it's going to take a while for us to get to a place where we have a little more standardized data that we're able to go back to that comparison. So it's a great question.
The answer was far better than the question, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Melanie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's extremely helpful for us.
Thank you.
Okay, special education report, Elizabeth.
CSE and CPSE recommendations are all on the consent agenda.
Thank you so much. Chief Information Officer's report, Dr. Kimmer.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Hopefully you can see this okay. And as a reminder, you have probably a 50 to 80-page set of workbooks in your packet. But I know more than not that, you know, you'll chew on that and you'll think about it and reflect. And if you have any questions, please follow up with a phone call or a visit. I know some of you have taken me up on that, because there's a lot in there relative to enrollment projections. So let's dig into it. Enrollment projections primarily based on a census that our Student Services Office sends out summertime or fall, depending on what we have going on this year with the pandemic. We got it out a little bit late, but nevertheless, here we are on time, and we played a little bit of catch-up. We also look at turnover rates and neighborhoods, and we look at birth rates too from Monroe County. What we don't have this year as a dimension is the 2020 census for national reasons. We don't have that distributed anywhere in the country. So we're going to do the best we can to give you the reliable information. Why do we do this this time of year? Start thinking about budget, of course, as Darren would tell you and Leanne would tell you, but also with sectioning, Mike Leone, Elizabeth Carpenter and others, be thinking about, you know, what our class sizes are going to be looking like, how that relates to dollars and cents. So that's the timing of things. It broke us up into five different chapters, and this has been very recursive over the last 15 years. So some of it's going to be familiar. And I have added some new slides this year towards the end of the presentation in regards to the attendance boundary study that we did with your approval this past year in 2020. So the traditional slide is this. We have a comparison of the 2019 data to this year's data. And when I say a comparison, we try to take the first week of October every year and do that comparison. It's a little bit of a moving target. I like to say October 1st, but if that lands on a Sunday, let's just say it's the first week of October to the first week of October, year over year. If you see different numbers that don't reflect 5,586 and it changes slightly, yes. We have students and families that come and go weekly. Our registrar is always very busy down the hallway here. But this is an October to an October comparison. And you will see that we lost about 78 students from last year. I'm going to go into the details to some degree with where those students went. And we do track every student. These aren't arbitrary numbers. For every one of our 5,586 students, we put a name. And we track that with great accuracy in conjunction with the Student Services Office. So and with Special Education and Elizabeth Woods Group as well. So we know who these students are and when they come and go. I put some asterisks, and we're going to dig into that a little bit within my 15 to 20 minutes of this presentation. But I just want to remind everyone that the asterisks are there for the elementary enrollment change, because Allen Creek, Jefferson Road and Menon Center, those are the three schools that we changed the attendance boundaries. And so you're going to see some double-digit percent increases and decreases that you shouldn't be worried about. It was all very much planned. And for the community that's possibly watching this tonight, that was a very much planned event as Menon Center was growing beyond our capacity. I like to show each year, not only the number charts, but also the line trends, depending on how you learn best or can view this data. We talked already today about the full-day kindergarten impact. But this is, shows a little bit of bump up in 2018 when we went forward with full daycare and then it normalized towards 2020 and 2021. Secondary presentation portion is always my easiest, because over the, at least the last five years that I've been doing this presentation, and I've looked back into the data from years past, the secondary enrollment change never is really anything that exciting. There's no wow factor to it. It's very stable, it's very predictable. Families move in, eventually they stay, and either they continue to stay or they go. But they certainly settle in before the middle school and high school experiences. Are there some ebb and flows to the middle schools and high schools, of course, but nothing drastic. And there's nothing in a few minutes, when I get into the predictions, predicting that they would change greatly down the road either. So there's two slides that look very similar, so it's not an eye chart, or they're very purposeful. And you'll notice this first slide are grades 6 through 8. And there's a little bit of a slight word, slight trend down. of a slight word, slight trend downward, but, but I would summarize by saying very flat over the years 2011 through 2020. And this is where the eye chart kicks in. This is a quick switch of the slide here. It's now grades nine through 12. Once again, a few ebb and flows, but very flat over time. So nothing really exciting when it's a look back to, to a decade ago. So let's get into some of the predictions. I, I say this year after year because I can never take credit for the predictions. Consultants back in the 90s handed over some, some formulas that we continue to, to use and to, to, to track in the Excel spreadsheets that we sent to you, also in your board packet, but by experts back in the day, and then carried on by mathematicians who were before me. So the predictions are usually very solid. And an example of that was about a year ago, I stood in front of you and provided the numbers in the second column there that were the projections, and then we ended up with the actuals in the middle of the page, and we were almost 99% accurate when it comes to the overall numbers. There were some differences. Put an asterisk by the K5. This is where I promised to come back to it. Thirty-five of the 67 that you see different were families who chose to take their young ones home and homeschool. That's not private school. That's completely off the books, homeschooled. That's where some of these young, youngest learners went. With that said, I'm going to switch to the five-year predictions. It's probably the first presentation I did as a Chief Information Officer a while back. Very similar level of accuracy, using those proven formulas, tracking trends, birth rates, move-in, move-out rates, otherwise known as turnovers. And we were projecting back then, five years ago, about 5,600, and we ended up with almost 5,600. So we were very close in our placements, just a little bit off in the K5, perhaps. Different cohorts, people move in and out, but overall, the big numbers were, were very accurate. I can't take credit for this, but 10 years ago, you would have seen a Student Services Director present this to you, and when you compare the column of 2010 predictions against what happened in October of 2020, there's a 97% level of accuracy when you look at the big numbers holistically. And I'll get into some of the grade-by-grade numbers too, if you want to get into the nitty-gritty, and then we do that as a projection as well. But fairly predictable, and the projections are usually something you can hang your hat on when you're thinking about capital projects or, or long-term strategic planning. We're, we're pretty good in that way. So with that said, we take the birth rates that we spoke of. We take those census forms that I started with this evening with you, and we plug those into the formulas, and we extrapolate those for who we know, and we put that into a, a sorting of where they would go by catchment area. And you'll see the predictions, no big changes, I would say, although for the one that you would notice in the years 2024 and 2025, a little bit of a downturn for Menon Center. And I put in the footnote, this is very purposeful, we purposely did the boundary reallocation so that we had some growth space at Menon Center. What we don't put into the projections because we simply don't know how many home permits will be issued beyond a year or two. We don't guess, and we also don't guess for permits that don't exist, who's going to move into homes that we don't know of yet. I would generalize by saying 2024 and beyond, we have left ourselves space in the Menon Center catchment area for home growth. And I'm going to show you some exact maps of where those homes are being built. So you should feel good that we positioned ourselves for several years to come, depending on who moves into those neighborhoods. And the projections over time are very flat for both Park Road, Jefferson Road, Thornell, and Allen Creek, with that slight downward trend for Menon Center, which may be a little misleading standing alone, but I just want to echo that there is a very strong possibility that that purple line will head towards an upward trajectory in 2024 or 2025, but, but ever so slightly. It's no, no big leaps and bounds of changes, no grand changes. And then we get into some of the projections for students that we know of, because when you go back a slide, it's again, children that have been born. In a few minutes, we're going to do some guessing to the best of our ability with birth trend rates, but these are for students that we have counted, that we have on paper, we have names to faces. And the only thing I would say about this slide with the secondary projections is that similar to Menon Center, you need to just be mindful that Barker Road could grow a tiny bit beyond what's projected here for known properties, known homes, and where the houses land in these developments. You might want to keep an eye on Menon High School. No triple-digit growth factors here, but you could have another 20 to 50 kids in each one of these schools, depending on who moves in, and we just don't know. We don't know until that happens, and that may not happen for five to 10 years. So what does that look like in a line graph? Relatively flat with a slight downward trend, although I would again generalize for the board and for the community that you will most likely see, depending on the economy stays and people actually do break ground and do build houses, you will most likely see a slight upward trend with Barker and Menon High. This is where we get into a little bit of the calculated guessing. I'm, I'm very careful with this slide. The 2020 are actual figures. The 21 through 25 are some of those projections based on kiddos that have been born. But then you start getting into 2026 and beyond, especially for the primary grades, that those children have not been born yet. And again, we're using county data from Monroe County, and we're using those turnover rates for homes that exist, properties that exist, to try to project out. And again, you don't see any large ebb and flows, nothing that I would be alarmed about or cause another need for another study anytime soon, similar to what we had to do last year. We like to use this slide because sometimes there's a misnomer that students are flocking either to a homeschool situation or to a private school or, or leaving outright. There's really none of that, but the top number, if you were to look at the top set of numbers on our bar charts, that's the total population of students that we draw from. Anyone living in our catchment area that are eligible for schooling. So like this year, for example, we had 6,317 pool of students that we could pull from, of which 5,586 came to us as students in Pittsburgh, and that could have been in a in-person role, a remote role, or a hybrid, but nevertheless, it comes to 5,586. And this is where the misnomer could maybe be solved, and that is, students are flocking to private schools, which is sometime watercooler talk, and it's just not true. As you look at that slight blue shading towards the bottom of the bar chart, you'll see for the last 10 or so years that it's been fairly flat in terms of the students that go to our private schools from our catchment areas. The only note I did put in here to kind of echo what I said earlier in the presentation is the 1% increase over time in the private school population is due to homeschooling. And we put them in the homeschooling, private school buckets because they could be homeschooled anywhere. They can go to Florida, they can stay in Pittsburgh, they can go wherever they want because they're homeschooling, but that's why we put them in a, in a private school bucket rather than somewhere else.
Jeff, are you, is part of your theory that we have increased in homeschooling because of the pandemic?
Yeah, unequivocally, Mike. And thank you for bringing that to the board's attention and the community. I have never seen numbers double like that since we've been tracking this data, and I've seen two decades worth of historical data, so that is an anomaly for sure. Something also to be mindful of with the pandemic, and when the pandemic ends, will those students come back to us? Probably, but your guess is as good as mine again.
Can you also tease out if the vaccine requirements caused any of this increase?
Tough to say. That's really subjective to the families, but I, I would say everything with the pandemic is causing some of these nuances, I would say for sure, but the exact reasons.
No, not, not the pandemic, but the vaccine requirement, the measles vaccine.
So I would say yes. We, and we have the data for that, Irene. Pat, I know that you, we, we probably can't hear you if you were to respond to this, but we do have the data of those that have chosen homeschooling over vaccining. So the vaccination with, that's a really good point. So the combination of the vaccine mandate along with the pandemic has caused that number to jump.
Yeah. Irene, sorry, I didn't understand your question. I'm sorry, Pat. Go ahead.
I was going to say that both of those are current. There are people who have explicitly shared with us that they're doing homeschooling this year due to the pandemic. And then we also saw not as large of an increase, but a slight increase in families choosing homeschooling versus vaccination.
Could everyone hear that?
Nope. You're going to have to paraphrase that for the community.
I would say that the answer was both, both because of the pandemic and because of the worry of vaccination. So thank you for rephrasing that. I didn't understand the question. I apologize. So getting back on track here with private school enrollments, these are the five schools that land within our catchment areas, again, relatively flat, if anything, slightly in a downward trend, and you can see the, the last 10 years or so worth of data there. Getting back to Irene's question and, and Dr. Van Brogen's point here, we show again where the homeschoolers landed, for whatever reason, and that's that anomaly that the superintendent spoke of, is that time over time, you'd see a number with homeschool. It was pretty solid around the 50 to 60 area, and this year to jump up to 120 was certainly a difference for us. The, the other column, that's not a, that's not a catch-all, that's not meant to, to hide errors. In your board packet, you do have a list of exactly where those places are. It's not an other school, literally. It's like staff at a college. It's, it's literally a set of places that are singletons that you can count on your And then we've descended from 6,000 students about in 2010, 2011. As you've heard me say a few times, it's down to 5,586, and then you'll see a flattening over time with certainly an upward trend, not, not huge, but an upward trend as we head towards the 2028 to 2030. And again, I just have to echo that I would say it was probably closer to 5,700 if the economy sticks and ground is actually broken and those houses actually go in, which I'm going to show maps of in a second. I also promised to show you this. This is also in your packet, and it'll be on the website for the community, how this ferrets out over time by grade. This is the sort of thing that HR and our building principals use and others to kind of predict and plan for placements and sectioning. A, a very helpful tool, I think. There's a little bit of a change over time from grade to grade, depending on that turnover rate, depending on who moves in and out, but overall, the numbers are fairly accurate when you look at the big numbers. In lieu of the 2020 census, this is a slide I was helped along with by the Regional Information Center. You can also see this data on data.nyorkscd.gov. This shows a little bit of a downward trend. I know it's a play on the eyes, but if you stare at it long enough, you'll see a downward trend for 18 component districts. I think there might be one that's flatter, increasing, but over the last three school years, this is a representation of enrollment, and you'll see a slight word, slight downward trend for almost every, if not every district across the county. So families are either getting smaller or people are moving out and not having children. Either way, it's a very subtle change, but nevertheless downward in, in nature. Ethnicity and race, we've been tracking this for quite a while, and we are definitely becoming more diverse. The first slide shows in terms of percentages, and you'll see the legend on the bottom of the slide, and for your packet on your computer, you'll see that legend there as well. And the first slide, whereas it shows percentages and that diversity that continues to change, the next number shows it in raw numbers. I did put a footnote because the American Indian, Alaskan native, such a small number doesn't show, but I assure you, for those of you that check my math regularly, that the 2021 does even out, and if you were to add those four students, then the numbers would compute. We show, here's a line, and the most noticeable question, as I practiced on my data team with this, is have we lost black students or black families? The answer was no. On the last five to 10 years, infinite campus with its system glitch, never let us count both Hispanic and/or black or any combination of being multiracial. And you'll see the multiracial trend going up, so as students and families self-identify, you're going to see that multiracial trend, trend upwards as families and the systems catch up with being able to dual identify. This gives you a nice 10-year donut chart of how ethnicity and race looked in 2011, 12, compared to what it looks like today relative to percentages. And then once again, the Regional Information Center at BOCES helped out. Same data you can find on data.nysed.gov. This is public transparent data that, as you look across the 18 component districts of our Regional Information Center, specifically our BOCES, you'll see that Pittsburgh is kind of in the middle of the pack in regards to its diversity, certainly much different than East Aranicoi and HFL, more in the middle of the road in terms of our student and family So getting into our last chapter or two, thanks for hanging in there. We're going to do the new home construction slides. I'm not going to name actual contractors, but I will show you where they are building if you haven't looked. And it's kind of been fun. I've been checking out the Home Finder more than ever. I want to, I want to buy a farm, but my wife won't let me. So I've been looking at homes meanwhile for this project. She says she is not helping me with the chickens. So we'll probably stay in Pittsburgh or Webster. But nevertheless, here's where you would build if you were to move in Pittsburgh, and that's, you see the, the bubble there. You are here, this is Barker Road is what we mean there, and then you'll see some peach space, shaded color depending on your monitor or your computer at home or here. And a lot of our properties are south of where we're sitting. I'm sure every one of you around this table can say, hey, I know of a building lot on my, on my street or near my street. Of course, there are singleton lots probably all over Pittsburgh, but we're looking at developments and tracks with potential that this would alert a Board of Education or a central office team to make some changes down the road. This is what we're talking about. And so left to right, Bridleridge Farms, if you were to drive, it's the quadrant one, if you will, the south of the thruway. That ground hasn't really even been broken, and when you talk to the town, I talked to Michelle DeVai there, that's my contact, she's the GIS map coordinator, literally on the phone with her today. She's very accessible and a, and a great collaborator. But she reminded us that that sub-development will not break ground and issue, they won't issue permits and building won't happen until probably 2022. But nevertheless, if you're keeping an eye on Menon Center and Barker Road and Menon High, that would be something to look at. They're looking at 20 homes for the year 2022. Moving towards the center of the screen, that's where you see the header of my slide about expecting 20 to 30 homes built according to the town, and it's Coventry Ridge and Willshere Hill and Country Point. They are building the 20 to 30 homes that we're really speaking of, that would, once again, feed into Menon Center, Barker Road, and Menon High. And then Malvern Hills, after calling that developer, they only have a handful of lots, and it's more of a Thornell Road, Barker Road, Menon High tract. So keeping an eye on all these properties, I just have to say it numerous times, no explosive growth. Never do we see 50 to 100 homes being built in a year or two. That just doesn't happen in Pittsburgh traditionally. We've also tracked Kilborn Place for years, and no different on our Attendance Boundary Line Committee. We track this property quite closely. Had the developer literally in my office to explain what his intentions were, and double-checked this again with the town this afternoon, that is expecting possibly town, six townhouses in the next year or two near the old Back Nine Restaurant, if you need juxtaposition here. And then the, what we're hearing from the town, not from the developer, although their stories do, do line up, is that there's a proposal for a 62-unit retirement apartment building. So not inexpensive housing for families or for large families or anything in between. It's for a retirement building complex, and that may have left the hearing phase, but no word from the town today that the approvals are completely done. It's still being monitored and still being adjusted. So the effects of the, the attendance boundary review, throw some numbers and some maps at you. This is probably a better exercise offline, but if you look at the before and after, the before is on the left, the 2019 to 20, and the 2020 to 21 maps, the subtle differences are found right in the middle of the map, and you'll see some of the Allen Creek shading dipping down past the canal, and you'll see the Jefferson Road swatch going from left to right. Those are the two biggest boundary changes that made Allen Creek larger because of the space available, and Jefferson Road a little bit larger because of the space available, thus making Menon Center smaller so we can accommodate some of this new construction that we talked about tonight. We did not change the middle schools. We did not change the high schools. So community members watching this tonight, and possibly just as a reminder, we did not change boundaries that would affect Hawkins, Barker, Menon, or Sutherland. And this is just a reorientation by grade. When we did the attendance boundaries, it did not change grades because the students are our students, and you see the differences there that I spoke of earlier in the slide deck. But then you start getting into, again, the three schools of Allen Creek, Jefferson Road, and Menon Center, and that's what I really want the board to kind of focus on as we finish up here, is the difference in students. Allen Creek grew by 55 as planned, maybe a little more than we planned, but it grew as we planned. Jefferson Road grew as we planned, almost to a T, and Menon Center dipped down a little more than we expected, and they lost 169 students. And how does that look? If you were to look in Deb Carpenter's notes as board clerk from back in March, it's one of the first presentations we did on Zoom here, you would see that we presented something called Alternative S after the committee looked at dozens of, of alternatives and studied the facts for several months. We came pretty darn close to predicting it with eight, within eight students overall of what this change would do, although I would just echo that Allen Creek grew a little bit more, I think maybe because families followed one another, the fifth grader stayed with the young ones, and Menon Center tapered off a little bit possibly because of what we talked about earlier with vaccines and the pandemic. So we got pretty close, and we were feeling pretty good about it. So overall, over the last 10 years, if you're looking at an outlook of building construction, sectioning, whatever in between that we need to do strategic planning or short-term planning with, we've been 97% accurate. And then that's over 10 years, and then 99% accurate over the last five years when you look at the big numbers. So I'll turn it over to the board and to the superintendent for any discussion or questions.
Jeff, just one point that I would like to make is that as difficult and emotional as it was to do the Menon Center enrollment study and then follow through on the recommendations, had we not done that, without question, we would not have been able to keep our elementary school students in five days a week this year. We did not predict, obviously, there'd be a pandemic, but one of the things with following through that we had to decide was whether or not to move forward with those recommendations. And because we did, I, I think that the numbers were so solid, it allowed us to keep students in their home school and for us to allow students five days a week at the elementary school. So just again, another thank you for you for facilitating that committee and for the board and others for their guidance to move forward with those recommendations.
You're welcome. And of course, kudo go to the committee. We had some really good parent thinkers and teachers and administrators who really gave everything and really helped make that happen with accuracy. So I want to thank them too.
Anyone else have questions? Jeff, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome.
Superintendent's report, Mike.
Thank you, Amy. There will be a need for an executive session this evening and that is to discuss proposed pending or current litigation.
May I have a motion, please? Thanks Pete. Renee, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Just like to acknowledge the gift from PTSA for the Sources of Strength Program at both Menon and High School, Menon and Sutherland High School. That gift of $2,000 will certainly help us continue our movement towards promoting mental health. Also on the consent agenda, just for the public to hear is the policy approval, second reading on preschool education program. Like to ask the board if there's any questions regarding the first reading of Policy 7621, Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act of 1973?
Nope.
Okay. So I have a few updates that I'd like to share. The, the first one is around vaccination, a little bit of vaccination confusion. On Friday, the governor made an announcement about getting vaccines out as quickly as possible and that changes would be forthcoming. Actually, this evening, starting at seven, I believe he has a webinar talking about more specifics relative to that announcement. But since the report on Friday, you can imagine all of our staff and some of our parents and community members were wondering, when is information going to come out from Monroe County? Where do I sign up for vaccinations? All of those types of questions. While we haven't received anything specific from Monroe County as of today, I, I'm guessing that we will have information tomorrow. The issue seems to be around availability and accessibility to the supply in Monroe County at the, at this point. Other counties have allowed people on their websites to sign up for vaccinations and get scheduled, but not a lot. So I know that that window time for people to sign up and get vaccinations has, has closed. And I think again, another part of the confusion is the, the mixing of the category 1A and 1B, essential folks that can, can get vaccinations. My understanding at this point in Monroe County, and, and I could be wrong, but I believe this to be accurate, is that the 1B employees are, or the 1B workers are all employees for public schools. And regardless of when websites are up or active or when you can sign up, we have to get to the 1A people first. And so all of the 1A people still are going to need to be vaccinated before we get to 1B. So I think that we're just having to be patient. It is frustrating during a pandemic when you really yearn for accurate communication and, and communication is not out there. I don't necessarily fault anyone for that, but I do want to acknowledge the frustration and pledge to everyone that as soon as I receive information that I feel confident in sharing that, that I will. We're hoping for clarity tomorrow. We do, the superintendents do meet with the county health department at noon. So hopefully I can update our school community shortly after. The other update is around volunteering, voluntary testing. I have received 1,300, or we have, the district has received 1,300 rapid tests. And this week I'll be communicating to the school community how to voluntarily get tested and what that will look like. Essentially, each of our buildings will receive 20% of the tests relative to their enrollment and staffing. We'll work from the consent forms that parents have sent in and then we will select 20% of the students, hopefully from every grade level, from those that gave consent. And in order to make sure everyone is okay with it still, those that are pulled to get tested, parents will be notified just to double check that they are still okay with it. We'll also be testing 20% of our staff where appropriate. For example, at the last round, we did test quite a few of our staff members at the secondary level, but we did not test many staff at the elementary level or transportation. And so this round of voluntary tests, we're really going to try to do a pure scan of the district and look at that 20% in the, in the purest form. Again, your child will not be tested without an additional consent. We will notify you if your child has been randomly selected and then we'll wait for your consent. We're going to hopefully start this next week. So this, in the next couple of days, the community will receive a notification from me. And then we will begin testing on the, as soon as January 19th and we'll keep that testing window open through Jan, through the end of January. It really will not be intrusive at all. 20% over a period of two weeks is, is very little. So we, we will not have students or staff waiting in lines. I see us pulling in students with, with very little disruption and gone out of class or whatever area we may pull from for a very short amount of time. The test itself takes about, the whole process from start to end will probably take about three to five minutes approximately. So more information to come on that. Also, I do want to acknowledge that there's quite a few different opinions about what's happening in our state and specifically in our school community regarding how to handle COVID-19 in schools. I don't know how to say this without, with, without, without, what's specifically qualifying this. So I will share that I have a lot of emails from family members that are really concerned about our students being in school right now with the high infection rate. I receive comments from community members that think that we should be in school five days a week full-time. And I have different opinions from staff members and across the board. So I think everyone right now is trying to figure out, what do we do with getting students back to school or is what we're doing working? So we should stay with it. And there's, there's a lot of confusion and I think that's a very normal, a normal place to be right now because we've been in this for, for so long. So I guess I, I would offer this is that the approach that we've been following so far, the very beginning of, of COVID-19 and, and putting in our reentry plans, we talked about making sure we kept our protocols really tight and focused on the health and safety 100%. And then as we learn more about the virus and learn more about our protocols, then we would monitor and adjust as appropriate. We also, from day one, have been following health guidelines from the CDC, from the New York State Department of Health, from SED and from Monroe County Department of Health and continue to do so as the public health experts. We also feel that our protocols are working. So we're now processing how we can go from tight to start loosening a little bit, but also at the same time acknowledging that there is a lot of community concern and, and internal concern and, and concern elsewhere around our high rates. We are above 9% still, but we feel that internally we're managing it. So we're looking at how we can look towards the future and, and going from tight to loose, looser. And we're, so we're looking at things like how can we start bringing students back to school more? How can we bring students back to school for clubs? How can we bring students back to school for extracurriculars in a safe way? Bringing students back into school for extra help in a safe way. And we're looking at every practice that we have where we can safely and incrementally bring students back and assess and then continue to, to, to go from there. We're looking at everything in addition from clubs and activities and extra help to things as simple, well, it's not that simple, but to allowing students to have lockers, assigning them lockers at the secondary level and looking at how we handle sports, looking at how middle schools are currently being run as far as students staying in the same class versus changing classes in the hallways. So what are some of those things that we can do to bring back a sense of normalcy, but at the same time not be so extreme where we're going to have to possibly contend with looking at significant numbers of, of spread within our schools. So we ourselves are also studying this. I also will share that we're also cognizant of the range of emotions and worries from parents, students and staff. And because safety certainly has always been our guidepost, we are taking this slowly and methodically. We're listening to everyone. So regardless of who you are or what your stance is, we are taking in information. We're processing it and we're sharing it with other health professionals, along with other superintendents in the county so that we can vet different decisions. We're also planning forward with many of the what ifs. So what if we are at a real high vaccination rate in our school district? What if the infection rates go down? Is there a, a way or what, what, what are the environmental factors that would allow us to continue to loosen those guidelines and bring students in more? I, I will share that I did send our seniors an email and senior families an email last week, just sharing how, how difficult this is. Not only are they going through this entire year so far in a, in a remote type of world, even though we have two days a week in school, they ended their year last year that way. So last year, our seniors missed their junior prom. They missed a lot of their extracurriculars and sports and going into this year, they missed a lot of the fun things that are part of our history, like the rainbow classic, pink the rink, homecoming. And so my heart does feel for our seniors in particular. Our K-5 students, as you know, are in school every day should the families choose. And our six through 11 are in two days a week. But our seniors, I feel if there's something we can do for them, I, I will be a huge advocate to see how we can get seniors more experience in some of those milestones that they hopefully won't miss this year. So wait and see if there's a window of opportunity where the environment allows it, then I will be an advocate for our seniors to experience as much as they can. It's been tough this year thinking about so many different things that are happening in society in addition to the pandemic. And so almost, well, I, I guess I don't want to give it a percentage, but the majority of our thinking and doing this year has been in response and trying to be proactive as it relates to COVID-19. But that's not all that we're doing. And what I'm seeing in the classrooms, and it's, 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 again, difficult to explain, but when you see what's happening in our classrooms, it's, it's, it's amazing. We're seeing our strategic initiative really thriving with, with students fully engaged while they're in person. I see our remote teachers doing everything they, they can to, to make the experiences relevant and authentic and engaging. We're, we're, we're doing better than trying. We're, we're doing a lot of wonderful things for our students when they're with us or when they're remote. And I'm really happy and prideful of how hard and deliberate our staff are in, in making this a, the best experience it can be. In addition to what's happening structurally, I would also, also share that the pandemic has slowed down the, the goals that we had specific to inclusion and diversity. It's, it's been really hard to pull people together in a meaningful manner other than Zoom, but that work hasn't stopped. And, and I think that what I'm really the most proud of is not just the Pittsburgh Central School District, but the county's pledge to take on inclusion with all 19 of our schools. One of the most recent ways that we did that was appointing Tasha Potter as the Director of Diversity and Equity Planning through BOSI's, which gives all of us access to her level of expertise. This is a newly created position, which was a collaboration between Monroe one and two. And Tasha will provide consultant services to our regional school district partners as we will all work towards a more culturally responsive education and classroom. She comes to us from Greece. Through her work as a district's director for equity and family community engagement, she led the equity design team to create a responsive, inclusive and mindful educational community. Our district will meet with Tasha next week, I believe, and we will better understand what she can offer to Pittsburgh and, and how we can best utilize her expertise. The other thing I want the community to be mindful of is the superintendent's letter that we sent out earlier this summer. We're a superintendent's, we specifically wrote about standing together against racism. And we also stood together to express our notion that racism certainly exists in all of our communities. We see it in the bias that exists within our own districts. We see it in the trauma and hatred and oppression that inflict our students and families. And we see it in inequities in our systems that continue to perpetuate disparities in student outcomes. We have all taken this very seriously. Some of our pledges that, that we listed there, that, that we would commit to as a county were to look at our policies and practices that specifically would ensure equality in a lot of different things. We are very close, possibly close to our next board meeting or the one following to present the board with our own Pittsburgh equity policy. And that equity, equity policy will serve as an umbrella for our expectations relative to practices to ensure equity for all. We've also pledged to accelerate professional development in areas including cultural responsive education and restorative practices. And again, while it's been tough doing this remotely and taking a lot on with the pandemic, we've been doing that. Every building that we have have multiple members that are trained in restorative practices and restorative circles. We've had about 300 staff trained in microaggressions, cultural competency and teaching this year during a, a rough year. So that, that work is ongoing and it certainly is our leader in topics for professional development. We also all agreed to participate in the regional equity network, network to promote equity in our schools around the country, the county. So once a month, superintendents and others, so for Pittsburgh, Melanie Ward, our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction has joined every month. And we've spent about an hour and a half to two hours each month, learning from one another and trying to, in learning from one another, to look at strategies and mechanisms, to look at best practices to, to, to make a difference in implementation. And so that's, that's been helpful. We also committed to work with BOSI's and the University of Rochester for Urban Education Success to develop common units of study and curriculum across our schools. On Friday, I received the, the full scope and breadth of the work. And I would simply say it's been, it's amazing. Those that worked on the curriculum specifically have done a phenomenal job. I think that when our community sees it, it's something that every community member will be proud of. It focuses on citizenship as well as be proud of. It focuses on citizenship as well as learning the history of Rochester and juxtaposing where we were in 1964 to where we are now and doing quite a bit of comparisons and analysis, a lot of critical thinking. I think our students will find it very authentic. And while our equity policy should be close to go in February, I look to give the Board of Education an update specific to the curriculum in our February board meeting as well. Other things we committed to was listening and responding to the voices of our students and families of color. I've seen multiple, multiple examples of this. Some of them have actually led to restorative circles. They've led to restorative circles that happen via Zoom with classes or with small groups. I've also seen our district working really hard to brainstorm and problem solve with parents with, from the lens of not being defensive, but to learn from one another with the hope of creating and building relationships. And then the last thing that we pledged to do is to engage our students in student-led initiatives like Rock to Change. So the Rock to Change groups continue to meet. Our students are also right now involved in Black History Month planning. So we will continue to look at our, some of our clubs and diversity clubs and other venues within our district to let the students of color's voices be heard and other students' voices be heard as it relates to race and our planning towards Black History Month. Our letter concludes by saying this, "We stand united in our support of equity and inclusion, and we claim schools as a safe, as a place of love and acceptance for all. Our school communities have the power to turn pain and prejudice into healing and understanding. Let this moment in history be defined as a tipping point, a moment to truly come together." I think those words are worth mentioning now more than ever, that we are at a tipping point. We're at a tipping point when I think about what happened at the Capitol and everything that happened from the time we left in March to that point. And we need to find a way to come together. We need to find a way to include our students and our families in dialogue under the context, I think, of love and being a good neighbor and understanding where people's perspectives are coming from. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of our IAC, who's been very active. They have taken a lot of the work that Generation Ready has produced, and they're making recommendations specific to the data that they collected around many of the studies we've conducted. And I look forward to presenting the board with their recommendations. I spent the day today, along with others, specifically the secondary principals, middle school and high school principals, and central office team members, reviewing IAC's recommendations and other data points that we've been collecting. So I guess, again, I would just share that while it seems quiet, we're doing a lot, more positioning ourselves to really come out of the gates next year as we start the year, to come out strong, while at the same working on things that we can do in the now, like our equity policy and some of the work moving forward, like Black History Month, for example. But going back to our inclusivity roots of including all people and all students, so that everyone can feel that Pittsburgh is their home. So I think the last thing I'll have to, I have to share, I'm sorry for the length of this, our Jeff Road Elementary School principal search is coming to an end. So that process involved a pretty comprehensive first round of interviews, which yielded four finalists. Those four finalists have all presented to staff. Staff have given their feedback specific to the finalists. This week, we completed the site visits for the four finalists, and then the final interviews will be this week with hopefully a recommendation to the board next week. And depending on when that principal can start, we may have to have a special meeting to approve the appointment. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Very comprehensive. Appreciate it. May I have an approval of the consent agenda, please? Thanks, Renee and Irene. All in favor? Motion carried. Old business? New business? Public comment? If you could please, if anyone is waiting, no one's waiting, okay. Well, we'll shut that right down. Thanks, Anthony. All right. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, Belle and Robyn. Thanks, Ted. We didn't forget about you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Ted and Darren, you can hop onto the link I sent for executive.